And good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 3rd, 2025 General or Regular City Council Meeting. And I'm wondering if the Denise, where is it Denise? Would you call roll, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Smisher.
Here.
Stein.
Here.
Tracy. Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
And Mayor, Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Okay, is Bradley Buck here? If not, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I have people that would like to address council. And as they came in, they were laid here at my desk. So Logan, would you like to come forward to the microphone and make sure it's turned on so we could hear what you would like to say?
It's on. So tonight, I'm here to discuss a bid opportunity that my company is being passed up on due to favoritism, nepotism, and retaliation from Rex Brady. I work full-time for the fire department and own this business on the side. The city of Canyon City posted an opportunity on BidNet on January 13th for local and out-of-town companies to compete for a mowing contract. On the 23rd, I received the bid results on BidNet and was not surprised to see that my company was the lowest bidder. I can say this because, like I said before, this is not how I make a living. This is just a side business. I was very surprised when I received a phone call from Rex telling me that he was not going to award my business the contract. He explained to me, "The bid documents required three years' experience, and I just started my business a few weeks ago." Rex then advised me they were going to go with the next bidder. Lo and behold, the next bidder just happens to be his nephew. The definition of nepotism is the practice of giving relatives or friends an unfair advantage in the workplace or other fields. I explained to Rex, "The bid documents plainly state the contract will be awarded upon the following contract. Section D 3.1, price. Section D 3.2, three years of commercial mowing and grounds maintenance experience is required." The documents do not say anything anywhere that a company has to be established for three years. I reminded Rex that my brother and I both worked for him for three years mowing these exact buildings and properties. But Rex replied to me, "Those years don't count." Apparently, saving the city $5,400 isn't something Rex cares about. Asked me later how I came up with that number. For years, community members have watched this city waste more money than we can count. But every four years, we find ourselves being asked on the ballot to increase property taxes and sales taxes. It is incumbent upon you, sitting there on this city council, to represent us community members and make sure every single penny is accounted for and spent wisely and honestly. This current situation is just one example where the city can save a chunk of change. It's your job to remember just how hard people in this community work for their money and remember that our tax dollars really do matter. Choosing a higher bidder over my company for false and unfair reasons is not only rude, dishonest, and sad to see, but is a preposterous waste of money. Practice prices of everything is going up, but not my bid, and for good reason. I chose fair and equitable pricing for, to not gouge my city government. Thanks to the Open Records Act, documents show in 2022, Roots submitted a bid for $1,400 a week to cut grass. Somehow, this year, unlike every other business, they lowered their bid by $620. I wonder if Uncle Rex tipped him, tipped off his nephew or insider information. We'll never really know. You are the final straw of the checks and balances to make sure this stuff doesn't go on in our town. It's your job to correct the lies and wrongs that have gone on the, on in the past, and it's also your job to prevent the lies and wrongs now and in the future. Tonight, I'm asking you to hold yourself to a higher standard than Rex and do what is right. Award my company the contract we won and deserve. I meet all the qualifications in the bid documents. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone like to have any questions of Logan?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I've got a question. So we're saying on experience in that here. Are we talking experience as far as people working for another company or experience owning their own company? I guess, I mean, if he's, if he's worked for the city in that, doing this, and he worked for this, done this type of work before, I do know that you work for the fire department and, and that's how I know you, but. Yeah, I'm curious on this, just to, to see where that is, so.
Rex, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Would I believe the bid asked for three years of commercial mowing experience? Is that correct?
And I can do a rundown for you if you'd like?
Yeah, I'd like to hear how it was, how it's worded.
Okay, according to city employment records, Dylan Hillburn worked two seasons beginning 16 years ago in 2009. He worked, excuse me. He was hired on 6/1/2009 and separated on 1/15/2010 for a total of seven months, 14 days. And in 5/7/2010, he was rehired and resigned 12/31 for an additional seven months and 24 days. So that leaves a total of 15 months and eight days for Dylan. And according to city employment records, Logan Hillburn was employed three seasons beginning 14 years ago in 2011. His dates of hire were June 6th of 2011, and he resigned on August 19th, 2011, for two months and 13 days total. In June, he was rehired, June 4th, and resigned June 8th of 2012 for another two months and 20 days of service. In 2013, he was hired 5/28 of 2013 and resigned 7/30 of 2013 for two months and two days of service. The total time employed by the Parks Department for both Dylan and Logan combined is 22 months, 10 days, and this includes weekends. The total time employed by the Parks Department for both Dylan and Logan combined during the mowing season was 18 months, 10 days, well short of the 36 months required. And regarding the accusation of nepotism, I would ask our attorney to address that.
So the city has a policy on nepotism? My understanding is that, you know, and we did not evaluate this, so just for the council's information. My understanding is nephew falls outside the definition of immediate family?
It does.
So that's the, the technical policy that you have.
I would also like to point out that the city uses a system called BidNet where the results are not published until the date. So any, there, there, any accusations of impropriety as far as sharing information about what's been submitted, there's no way for Rex to know that until after the, the bid date has been, or has passed.
Amy?
This requirement clearly states that three years of 36 months of commercial mowing and ground maintenance experience is required. This requirement has been in place since the bid was first awarded back in 2015 and has not changed. The lack of experience is the sole reason that I disqualified this bid. Has nothing to do with the second-place bidder whatsoever. And I resent the accusation.
Okay, Kathy?
My question was answered by Jerry's. Thank you.
Okay, Amy?
Thanks. Logan, could you clarify? Do you have other commercial mowing experience outside of you and your brothers work with the city?
I guess we'd have to define commercial mowing because I've worked for the fire department for eight years, and we've been doing mowing and side jobs for at least seven of those eight years. So I guess it would depend on what you define as commercial mowing. Does it have to be a commercial piece of property? Then, then no. But if we're talking about small yards and people's personally-owned property, then yes. I've been doing it for the last seven years.
Thank you. And is that detailed in, in your company's application?
No.
Okay.
No, it didn't ask for any of that information. It just, just plainly stated, "Three years of commercial mowing experience is required."
Okay. Does the application state like how you met that particular requirement or no?
Nope. It just asked for three commercial people, for them to contact.
And the first of the three commercial references was myself. I was never contacted to ask if it would be okay to use myself as a reference. It just showed up. The second reference is Canyon City Fire District, and the third reference is the Colorado Department of Corrections.
Any more questions of Logan, of Rex? Thank you, Logan. And then the next is Dylan. And you are Logan's brother, okay?
Good evening. My name is Dylan Hillburn. I'm the older brother of Logan and the co-owner of Hillburn Brothers Lawn and Tree Service. We're here tonight to discuss business and business only, so I want everybody to take the ego out of it. We are talking just business. We simply submitted the least expensive bid and possessed the necessary experience required to mow and maintain the expected properties by the city of Canyon City. I had the pleasure of working for Rex Brady for two straight seasons from the ages of 19 to 20 as a park seasonal maintenance worker and enjoyed every minute of it. I find mowing grass and maintaining those properties very therapeutic. I understand Mr. Brady's expectations and quite often exceeded them. That's why he brought me back year after year. And due to my work ethic, Rex hired Logan. We know how to mow and trim these properties. Today, I was able to obtain the records request, I was able to obtain through a records request for the 2024 maintenance worker for parks job announcement. Under requirements, it's listed, "Knowledge of the practices and methods of operating equipment such as trimmers and mowers." We possess this knowledge and these skills. Under minimum qualifications, one year of experience in construction, general labor, agriculture, or related field. We possess this experience. Shoot, if anybody owns property and has grass or lawns and have been mowing for years upon years, you also obtain that experience. This is basic mowing and trimming, not rocket science. My point and question is very simple. If the expectation to work or obtain a career with the city of Canyon City is to only have one year of experience, which he was discussing earlier, why is that expectation less than for a general contractor who only maintains a small percentage of the city's properties? A little bit of contradictory to my, in my mind. Is this to encourage or show favoritism to a more expensive bidder or a family member? Like Logan stated early and all stated as well? Not, not 100% sure. In closing, all we want to do is to offer, and we know that we can produce great quality at a fraction of the cost to our fellow taxpayers. We did not resign from seasonal positions. We were told to leave. Rex?
That is absolutely untrue. You went back to school.
Thank you.
And Logan, if I could, or Dylan, if I could ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
When did you establish your company?
About a month ago.
About a month ago. Okay, and so obviously, number of years engaged in contracting business is zero. Is that correct?
No.
How do you define that?
The years of experience?
Yes.
Yeah, well, you listed them off earlier, saying that we worked for the city. So that, that counts as the years of experience, correct?
It does not, because 36 months are required. And you, in total, have 22 months and 10 days.
Okay, through the city, right?
Employed with the city Parks Department.
Okay, so then, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So then, why are you going over those, those years of experience if they don't matter?
You didn't meet the minimum qualifications.
Okay, we're not gonna get in an argument here.
You guys did great work while you were here, and that's why I brought you back. You know, several years in a row. I have no personal vendetta against you guys at all.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this something council would like to, can you continue on more?
I, I'm just curious, and you don't have to come back up. When you guys were doing all these side jobs over all these years, did you file separate business tax returns? Or how, how did you report that income? Okay, I was just wondering if, if that would satisfy the commercial requirement, but if there's no separate.
No, like I said, it was real small, to be honest with you. The reason why we commercialized this year is because we were getting so many calls and so many people asking us to come work with them. But it was either time to stop or, or commercialize. So that's where we're at. And everybody's gotta start somewhere. But the experience that we have with the city and the building of the city.
Okay, thank you. All right, Tim?
I'm just gonna say this. I mean, they, I understand the, what the bid network, bid, the contract called for on experience. But it's mowing yards. It's, it's mowing lawns. I don't know what else is involved, maybe, but. You know, I think these are two young people. Like I said, I've, I've met Logan before at the fire department. I'm sorry, I've never met your brother until just a minute ago. And, but it's mowing. And if it's saving the, the city five grand, I think that's something we really might wanna look at.
Amy?
Thanks. I, I do have additional questions about this. Do you want us to get into this now, or do you want us to wait until we're talking about the consent agenda?
We could, either that or we just pull it off the consent agenda, which is a pleasure of council.
I think it makes sense to pull it off. I think there's enough kind of conversation around it.
Okay. Well, then let's move on. Is that okay?
Good evening. I'm here, I'm, my name's Kathy Madonna. I live in Florence, Colorado, 504 Brookway. And I'm here because I have a concern of something that happened this weekend. I'm the moderator of the Democratic page, and so I'm on Facebook quite a bit, moderating our own members and looking for information to post that's unique and local issues besides all the national things that are going on. I found an article about a Canyon City police officer that I found very positive and shared that on our post and on our page, and then it was gone. And it's like, why? Why was that gone? Why was it taken off so suddenly? It was like within 24 hours. And I started hearing rumors, and this is what I need to verify with you all to make sure that I understand what happened. It was pulled by the police department because of racist comments that were coming back, backlash. So I wanted to make sure that that is what happened, and if that's what happened, that makes me sad. It makes me angry, but it provides an opportunity for you all as leaders of this community to not let that get swept under the rug. Anytime someone does a good job and is acknowledged, good. It just makes us look good. Racist comments, pushback, that's not who we are. It may have been who we were historically 90 years ago. Slowly, slowly, we're turning that around, and I want you all, if you would, take the opportunity to not let this go by. What does this say to our schoolchildren? If you do. So please make it an issue. State proudly and defiantly, this is not who we are, who we want to be, who we strive to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, we're going to talk about it later. Deb?
Hi, I'm Deb Dewey. I've been up here before. I'm here because I went to recycle cardboard over off 50 between 6th and 7th, and the bins are gone. And so I tried calling Republic. Well, first of all, I called here at the city, and I called Republic, and I was on hold quite a while, and when I got through to them, it was a Denver number. And I said, "It says transfer, transfer station on my phone, but you're answering up in Denver." And so he said, "Well, let me get you the little, the local number." Well, he came back and said, "I'm sorry, but this number will ring for us whether it's trash recycle or, what was the other one I wanted to say? Trash recycle or transfer station." Sorry, I've had a really long day and I'm pretty tired. So he had no number to give me. So I had to get in my car and I had to drive to the transfer station. And then I got to talk to Denise a couple times, which was very helpful and helped me understand. And apparently Leo Evans had to drive to the transfer station too because he was on hold for an hour. And Denise apparently was on hold for an hour till she gave up. And so at the transfer station, I got there at 4:30 and they'd already closed, but there was a man there who uses the big equipment to push the stuff over the cliff into the truck. And he was explaining that there had been a mattress put in there and that they find garbage in there, which I find very disappointing. And I would like to say to all of you out there, whoever put a mattress in our recycle bin and is throwing trash in a recycle bin, you've ruined it for the rest of us. Because they come every two weeks, I mean, excuse me, twice a week, twice a week, and dump those dumpsters. And there's like five of them, and they're always full. And I've only seen, I think, a paper cup in there once, which I personally took out and took home and threw away because it's a great, it, it's full. It's used all the time. And apparently, the city told Howard years ago they could use this land to put these on as a community service, and now it's gone. And so I'm just wondering if there's another piece of land somewhere. I don't know if Republic would even do this, but if there's another piece of land somewhere in the city that we could put some dumpsters, that they would be more out where they're visible. And people would maybe do a neighborhood watch. Hey, you can't put that mattress in there. Or a number we can call if someone is, or maybe a camera up. I don't know, but it was a great service, and I'm really bummed out about it, to tell you the truth. And most people I know were really shocked to hear that we don't have that anymore. It's been very, it's been really, really nice to have. So at the transfer station, they said, "Well, you can go around the corner and you can dump it there. We have a recycle area." They want $14.99 a load. Now, I'm sorry, but I am not gonna save my recycle and my cardboard until I have a trash truck. I'm not making a lot of sense. I'm just really tired. Till I have a pickup truck or a carload enough to haul over there worth $15. And I don't know with the amount of cardboard, if I put it next to the trash can, the recycle bin, if they'll take it. I, I don't know. But I, I'm just really disappointed. So whoever out there put that mattress in there and people that are throwing trash in there, I'm really disappointed in all of you because you've ruined it for the rest of us. I'd like to say that. And if there's anything the city thinks they could do to help with this, I'd love to hear because I know you guys have, have an interest in this as well.
Okay, thank you, Deb. I don't know. We, that was a courtesy of Howard, and then the next company, and the next company. And we used it a lot. We live in that area. And my wife drove over there as well and was told that there was more than just, there was a lot of trash. It was a mess, and I could tell you that it was. So there are, there are bad actors that caused this to happen, and we're disappointed. I, I don't know what we can do as a city. That's a private entity. As far as making space available, I'm sure we do that. We have before. So we might discuss it, but that's a private concern, and I think you should address it to them or as many people that are listening tonight. Get ahold of it, and the public, because a lot of them, you, are their customers, and they need to hear from you.
Well, I've been back to the transfer station again today just to clarify and talk to, and I'm sorry, I don't have her name right, but she's the daughter of Mr. Howard, who built the company. Her name is Star Lean or something. And she's very nice. We talked for quite a while. But Howard's a big, not Howard, Republic's a huge conglomerate.
They are.
I don't know what state they're located in. Someone said they're nationwide.
Send a, send in a statement with your bill.
I don't know that that's gonna do a lot of good.
You never know. If they get enough pushback, I think they could. But we could, we could make land available.
You could make another piece of property available to put the dumpsters on?
I don't know. We probably can.
That would be really nice.
Okay.
Have a second chance, everybody out there.
Thank you.
And also, I heard there's another possible trash company that's already doing roll-offs, and they're looking at going residential, and they're local. So hopefully, that will work out, and we'll have another, we'll have a local company.
Okay.
And that's where I would put my money, is with the local company.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
That's it. We're public speaking. Let's go on to any council members like to do any announcements or board updates? Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. I have one announcement and one board update. And the announcement, I, I wrote it out because it's, it's really important to me. So as the United States recognizes National Black History Month, I would like to take a moment to honor the individuals who have made lasting contributions to our community and our nation. One such individual is here tonight with his family, Officer Jordan St. Louis, whose dedication to service and commitment to our city stand as an example for us all. Officer St. Louis has worked tirelessly to protect and serve our community, building trust and respect through his actions and helping to shape the next generation of leaders. As a school resource officer at Canyon City High School, he not only ensures the safety of students, but has also become a mentor and positive role model to the youth in our community. His vibrant personality and willingness to engage with students have made him a beloved figure at the school. Whether he's dancing alongside the cheerleaders during homecoming or coaching the boys' basketball team, his impact on the students goes far beyond his official duties. He uses his own life experiences to inspire young people, showing them that hard work, perseverance, and dedication can lead to success, no matter the obstacles they may face. Today, as we recognize Officer St. Louis, we honor his dedication and service along with the countless others like him who shape our world for the better by building one another up instead of tearing each other down. We each have a role to play in strengthening our community and making a difference in the lives of those around us. Let us all seek to carry the spirit of Officer St. Louis with us as we continue to work towards a brighter, stronger future, one built on dedication, perseverance, and a willingness to help each other. Thank you so much for your service. I'd also like to see if Chief Schick might have a few words that he'd like to say about Officer St. Louis as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, well, there's not much left to say, Ms. Councilwoman Smisher. You, you very eloquently portrayed a very positive image of Officer St. Louis. He is a gem at the police department. Kathy, thank you for your concern. We are looking to resolve that, so there'll be more to come. But we do appreciate your, your, well, first, your patronage on our page and, and willing to share that good message. Yes, unfortunately, we pulled that message down because out of an abundance of, of care and concern for Officer St. Louis and his family, as well as Officer Chan and his family, that came in over the. that came in over the weekend. And there were some, some things in there that we certainly found disturbing. And out of abundance of care and concern for them, we removed it. But we are looking to resolve that and repost that post in its entirety, so that he gets the recognition he deserves. He is, he is absolutely the model peace officer. He is a role model and mentor to our, our young people over there at the high school. He patrols there every day for their, their safety. As you indicated, he coaches. He never, ever misses an opportunity to represent our organization and our industry in the most positive light. And I am very grateful for him to be part of our team. I feel I'm a better leader, and we are certainly a stronger organization for the likes of Mr. St. Louis and all of our other team members that have different experience and perspective. Our strength is in our diversity. I truly believe that. So. Thank you, Jordan. You want to say anything? I didn't think you would. Councilwoman Schmisher, thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you. And I have watched Jordan at the high school, I've spent many hours up there. I enjoy getting to the high school. But I see these people, they, you have a great deal of respect there and love, and I appreciate that. I am, I have not seen comments. I, I don't generally look at those sorts of social things. And if whoever wrote them, I would invite them to please leave. We don't want you in our town. But we want you very much. So thank you. Okay? Okay. Anyone else? No. Amy, again.
Thank you. I also have a board update. I have the pleasure of serving as the city council representative to the library and museum board. And one of my favorite things to do at the beginning of each year is to share a couple of statistics. Our library in the year 2024 had fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine items checked out, fifty-six thousand. They had, those are physical items. Circulation of items, including digital, is over a hundred and twenty thousand. Over twenty-four thousand website views. And the daily counts of folks who actually came into our library was fifty-five thousand, sixty-five people. The amount of folks who come into our library, whether it's for free notary services, or story time, or crafts, or cribbage, or just to read, is truly phenomenal, and it's such a great resource for our community. Similarly, with the museum, we had in total, in 2025, eight hundred and twenty-two, sorry, eight hundred and twenty-two research folks who made contact with our museum, either in person, by mail, email, or phone. We had one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine visitors to our museum. And twenty-two hundred and fifty folks who participated in museum programs. So again, we don't often spend a lot of time talking about our library and museum up here, because they are so efficient and they both run so well. But it's always a great pleasure to highlight the, what they bring to our community and kind of the level of free services that they provide to everybody here in Canyon City. So if you haven't been to the library and museum in 2024, encourage everyone to get out there in 2025 and be a part of that story. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. I guess this dispels the rumor that libraries were going to go out of business because of the internet.
Not ours.
No, ours, no. That's a, that's a beautiful building. I'm quite impressed, of course, I get in there too. I'm a reader, I like to read. Any, anyone else? We have, go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind people in the audience, and perhaps listening at home, that we do have a general government meeting Wednesday. And there is also a URA meeting prior to the general government meeting that starts at five o'clock here in these chambers. URA, I believe, is just normal business. There will be some discussion about fire lines, and the general government meeting will be talking about water rates.
Okay. Anyone else going once? Okay. Well, let's move on then to consent agenda. I'd ask the city administrator to review the consent agenda and consent items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item seven A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on January twenty-first, the vision meeting on January twenty-second, and the special meeting on January twenty-second, which was an executive session. Seven B authorizes the mayor to accept resignation and appoint a new member of the arch board. Seven C authorizes the city administrator to sign a new service and installation agreement with Black Hills Energy for the park maintenance building for electric service. Seven D awards bid thirteen dash twenty-five SCAG turf Tiger II commercial turf mower to G and G Equipment of Frederick, Colorado, and an amount not to exceed thirty thousand, thirty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Seven E awards bid fourteen dash twenty-five Kawasaki Mule four, four zero one zero four by four UTV to Tech Service Solutions LLC, and an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Seven F awards bid fifteen dash twenty-five lawn maintenance bid to Roots Lawn Care and Landscaping, and an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Seven G awards bid nineteen dash twenty-five professional service contract for instrumentation services, water to Combi, and an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. And seven H is to receive and file cash disbursements.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any additions or corrections from council? None? I then ask for a motion on the agenda, consent agenda. Amy?
Thank you. Mayor Troutman, I move that we approve the consent agenda, moving item seven D to be the new nine A, and approving the rest as written. Thanks.
I believe that would be seven F.
F.
Apologies. Absolutely. Moving seven F to be nine A.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made in second. Any discussions on that?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The two, on seven D, are we replacing two mowers that are, or are we adding two mowers to the fleet?
Replacing two mowers.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Would you call Roe, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemmer.
Aye.
Okay, we'll do the administrators, city administrators' report, and then we'll go back and have a discussion of F. Okay? Ryan?
Yes, sir, thank you. You have the written reports in your packets. I think the, the highlights are the Blossom Committee still planning on having the carnival up at Ninth and Oak Creek Grade, or not, Ninth Elm and Oak Creek Grade. So we're still looking to host them up there. That goes along with our park maintenance facility building that's being built up there. We've got about two months left in that build, so that should be done in time to have some additional parking up there to facilitate Blossom Committee. And then the federal funds freeze was rescinded, so we, you know, last week was a kind of a teeter totter type of week, where we had a lot of stuff going on. And as of right now, there is no federal funds freeze, so we are continuing forward with the projects as planned.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. So let's go back to F and have, council would like to discuss that, because you took it off the consent agenda. Who would like to start? John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Rex, when you put in the contracts, or the city puts in, into the contracts, the requirement for commercial service as a, experience as a requisite for being awarded the bid, what are you looking for in commercial?
Well, the reason I require the three years is we, these are high-profile public buildings. And the three years' experience I felt was necessary to bring the, a contractor in that has the ability to do the job professionally. And that was decided when we first, you know, announced this bid in, in 2015. And so just quality of service is what I was requiring the three years for. So we would bring in a company that has at least three years of commercial mowing experience for quality workmanship.
And along that vein is the, are you also interested in, I mean, you know, when you're, when you're dealing with a commercial service, you're interested in other things other than just the straight service itself, such as handling billing and having requisite permits and equipment and things like that? Is that correct?
Right. That is, it's listed, you know, the contractor lists his equipment that he'll be using on the, on the project.
Thank you.
Amy?
And I will say, I mean, I could, I could go back and say, the total time employed by the Parks Department for both Dylan and Logan combined, within the mowing season, is eighteen months, ten days. And that, there is so much more involved. I mean, I couldn't drill down any further to, because the time sheets, it was so long ago, the time sheets are gone. But out of that eighteen months, probably fifty to sixty percent of that time was spent mowing, with the other fifty, forty percent being something else, picking up trash, cleaning restrooms, doing the rest of the parks. So when you really drill it down, you know, they have less than probably nine months of commercial mowing experience behind a mower, when we require thirty-six. And if we are to award this bid to them not being qualified at that thirty-six month requirement, the number two bidder will be in here the next council meeting. And so that's, you know, and like I said, it disturbs me that they, I was accused of nepotism during this process, which falls outside, nephew falls outside of that parameter. But he was the second lowest bidder. And that's what I do when a bid doesn't meet qualifications. I go to the second lowest bidder. And that was him.
Amy?
Thank you. And thanks, Rex. I obviously care very, very much about every taxpayer dollar that, that our city spends. I also care very, very much about ensuring the integrity of our contracting process. And I just want to make sure that I understand a couple of things about, about our process with this one. When we are saying commercial mowing, are we talking about using a commercial mower? Or are we talking about, like, the contractual process behind mowing? And having a commercial mowing company? And I don't know that we have that defined anywhere, but I think that we would know from reviewing the bid documents and determining whether or not people were eligible, what standard we were using. So I guess what I'd like to know is kind of what do we mean by commercial mowing? And B, can you walk us through your process for how you evaluate whether or not people meet the minimum qualifications listed in the bid documents? Thanks.
Well, what the contract states or the bid document states is, the contract will be awarded based on the following criteria. One is price. We are not bound to award our bids based solely on price. Three years of commercial mowing experience is required. That's the second bullet point. And then providing the proper insurance to be, to be working on public property. As far as defining commercial mower, who a commercial mower is, my take on it is defined by being in the business of mowing commercially. The second bid, and the third bid, and the fourth bid, and the fifth bid, all supplied so-and-so townhome, run-of-meet village, you know, and different commercial properties that they're mowing. And that's what I think this bid represents.
Thank you. That's really helpful in terms of understanding how you determine whether or not somebody met the, the bid qualifications.
Yeah, I just don't want, and not saying that these guys are, wouldn't do a good job.
Sure.
I know them. I was a little bit surprised at what they, they said to me, it was a little hurtful. But, you know, I hired those guys back year after year after year, because they were good workers. And then to be attacked like that is, is hurtful to me, when they obviously don't meet the criteria within the bid documents. And like I said before, if we bring the second, if we give them, award them the bid, I can guarantee you the second bidder will be in here saying, hey, he didn't meet the qualifications, I did, he got the bid, what's up?
And if they had, I mean, the work that they've done with the fire department, if that had been done through a commercial entity, through a commercial business, then that experience may have counted in a different way? Is that fair to say, or it's a hypothetical?
Correct. They just listed as their, can't see, I don't have the glasses on. They listed commercial references as their places of employment. They didn't mow any property at the fire department, they didn't mow any property at the DOC. They base their experience solely on the work that they did, for me, sixteen years ago.
Well, I think when they were up here addressing this earlier, and granted, it's not in the bid documents, so you would have no way of, of evaluating based on that. But it, it sounds like they have done work for the fire department in a mowing capacity, if I'm understanding correctly.
No, no, there's a company.
I think my one other kind of line of questioning, completely understand, according to the city's policies, that nephew is not immediate family, and even if they're, yeah. But I also think that we, as a city, need to be above even the perception of, you know, that anybody shouldn't be able to say, but, you know, that's your best friend, or that's your, you know, why were you involved in this particular decision? And I'm in no way trying to impugn your reputation or character, or say that you did not do your job, or that you did not do it with the utmost integrity. But I do think that we, as a city, I know that you and Director Nordike are looking at the purchasing policy, Administrator Stevens, and I think it would behoove us to think through, what are things that can cause people to question kind of our purchasing policy practices? How are we determining things? And when should we have a recusal policy? Not because we can't make decisions completely ethically, but because we want to be above even the, you know, a potential perception of a conflict of interest. And I don't know what the, the right line is. And clearly, you know, according to the city's current policy, you are well on the right side of that line. But I do think it may behoove us to look at that and think through, what should that look like moving forward?
It's certainly, certainly something we can look at, absolutely. I think when you're in a small town and there's, there's a lot of big networks and families that have been here a long time, it can get a little sticky sometimes. And that's, you know, it's unfortunate, but it's part of living in a small town. But we, we can certainly look and see what mechanisms we have for future bids.
Because I, we certainly want to ensure that our city staff are protected to the greatest extent possible as well, and not put in a position where folks can, you know. So, thank you, I appreciate you looking.
And just for, for this situation, I do know that the Hillburns did appeal Rex's decision to Leo Evans, our public works director, who took a separate look at it and came to the same conclusion.
That's really helpful to know as well.
Okay. Any other discussions of council?
I'm just going to say this. And again, I, you know, the process has been, but I think when, again, the small-town thing, I think, you know, for instance, if they've worked for the Parks Department, they've cut for the fire department. And again, how much, I think we might want to, to take a peek, especially if it's a local company, how many years' experience? I mean, there's, there's definitely no doubt, there's, there's some businesses that you want that experience. But there are some that realistically, I don't think need as much experience. I may be way wrong here, but that's just my two cents worth in. And especially- I may be way wrong here, but it's just my two cents worth and, and especially if if it's an ongoing business and and just doing different factors like that.
Okay, I'd like to kind of wrap up. Did you, you had your, I don't know who you are. Would you like to talk again?
Well, I was getting around to some numbers with you guys and really importantly, to be able to call back to Rex personally.
What numbers?
Like the city administrator said.
But what numbers do you think you have?
How we, how we came up with the whole idea of nepotism and how far off.
Okay, well, I don't know if that, I think that all the criteria was fairly well explained to everybody here and so it's up to council to make that decision and I would ask that that you do that, either what, don't do the bid, approve it, whatever. It's up to council. I don't get a vote in this. Well, we, I might. So, go ahead.
Mayor, I just had something quick to say. I think we either need to set up our own system for bids or we're going to rely on BidNet. If we're going to rely on BidNet, this process is supposed to be separate and away from, you know, inside the city. So, and that was the way this was done, but if we have to make exceptions, then maybe BidNet is not the way to go. Maybe we need to bring it in-house. I don't know. Thanks.
I would like to comment on that real quick. You know, we previously did it in-house. When we went to BidNet, we received more bids and we received more competitive bids and I think for the interest of the taxpayer, using BidNet has been a benefit.
Okay.
If I could, if I could just ask one more question and that would be to Catherine to get your take on this, this whole situation.
Well, I'm not going to give my legal opinion in an open meeting. So I answered the legal questions beyond that. I'm not going to provide any other information. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary. Thank you, Catherine. So what's the pleasure of council? Would someone like to, John, go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. I move that we award bid fifteen twenty-five lawn maintenance bid to Roots Lawn Care and Landscaping LLC in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Andrea, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? If not, would you go ahead and call roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hemmerich.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda is discussion consideration of emergency repair of Whitewater Park feature. We did the city administrator's report.
We did.
We did. Okay. We, you were here, weren't you?
Evidently not.
It was, it was lengthy. No. So, yeah, let's talk about the, how the city administrator discussed the emergency repair of Whitewater feature.
Actually, I'm going to turn this over to Rex here in just a moment. The overall or the over overview of this is that we've got a part of the river, some of the play feature and area that is starting to erode and this is a bid to go in and make those repairs. I did speak with Chris Moffett earlier today from RG Rio. They are in support of making these repairs, but I'll pass it to Rex to talk a little bit more in-depth about the project itself.
Yeah, actually, I called Scott Shipley. He's the engineer with S two O who originally designed the the feature. He came down and met with us just to kind of give us his opinion of what it would take to fix this. But what has happened, it's on River Right, right behind our shop. There's a boulder and concrete deck that goes out to the rapid block structure and we've developed a void underwater underneath that boulder structure, boulder and concrete structure that obviously was underwater and we weren't aware of it until I think it was, might have been Chris Moffett told me about it. And I wasn't sure exactly what he was talking about. I knew we had some erosion on the opposite bank and until I actually found out what was going on and we actually got down in the water and checked it out, but there is a big void underneath that and right where that void is, is where a lot of the smaller kids get out that don't want to go through the big wave. And it's a very, very dangerous situation where at high water, someone could get under there. We, I could get my, most of my body underneath into that void and it's probably, it's hard to tell. We're just poking around in there with a stick and not doing any scuba diving in there, but it's a fairly large void and the fix will be, we'll have to get the, the bidder or the contractor to build a cofferdam to, of course, get the water out of there and have to be pumped out. Hole will be bored into the top of the concrete structure and then that hole formed up and we'll pump concrete down into that section to fill that void and then stack more boulders against that area to prevent it from doing that again in the future. So that's the repair. And I did get two estimates. I requested a third and a fourth from two other local contractors, but never heard back from them.
Are you going to disclose those approximate amounts or?
So. They're in your packet.
Yeah, they're, they're in the packet. We're looking at Langston Concrete, correct?
No, we're looking at Ken Avalanche Excavating and they were the contractor that actually built it in the first place.
So it's out of warranty?
Yes.
Just kidding. I didn't see that in my packet. Maybe I came to the party late.
Yeah, it was, it was attached.
Were you, are we, are we letting Leo off easy and he, we're not going to ask him any questions?
I didn't even know Leo was here.
I'm sorry. You were sitting back there so quiet, all by yourself.
I thought he would be up here supporting me maybe a little bit, but.
Oh, no, he's not getting near you. Just kidding.
I guess, I guess I can't blame him tonight.
Oh, okay.
But it's obviously a safety hazard so far. I mean, last year, there's a upstream, there's a place called Frog Rock, which is basically the same thing and we lost three people in that hole last year and that's not what I want to see happen at our park. We've been fortunate to have, you know, a great track record with safety there and and this is an important fix.
Well, it's incumbent upon us to fix it now that we know about it.
Absolutely.
And publicly know about it. So what, John, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I defer council's information. The bid amount is twenty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
And unfortunately, it was brought to my attention after the bid cycle, so it's going to have to come out of my maintenance budget, which is sixty thousand dollars. So it's going to take a pretty big bite out of my maintenance budget for this year, but we do, I, nothing's in stone yet, but we, we have possible donations from RG Rio to help with it and possibly Fremont Foundation.
Okay, thank you. Amy.
Thanks. What types of projects do you see having to put on hold because of it?
Um.
Or is it more emergent as things come up and there's, it's hard to say?
Yeah, I mean, possibly trail maintenance or trail construction could suffer a little bit, but, you know, hopefully if we have a good year, you know, the funds will be sufficient to get us through the year.
Gotcha. I just want to note how often I'm down at Centennial Park and see kiddos playing on that play wave. I haven't ever seen Director Evans surfing on it. No, no.
You probably won't either.
But certainly in addition to the public safety aspect, ensuring that a good chunk of our river bed, river edge doesn't wear away or get torn away as well, I think is hugely important, so fully supportive.
If left unprepared, it's just going to get worse and worse and possibly if it ever got through that entire structure, it could collapse on itself, so.
I do want to update based off a comment that Rex made. I spoke to Fremont Community Foundation today as well. They're, they're not in a position to potentially grant any funds right now, so that, it's something that they're going to consider and talk about, but if we receive additional funds, it will likely, you know, it'd probably be RG Rio that would be contributing.
Or maybe pass the hat at Whitewater this summer.
Not my hat.
Would we envision just going ahead and awarding it to Avalanche at the twenty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-five? Like, is that the motion that we should be looking for?
Yeah, you know, I might throw a little bit of contingency in there because it's kind of an unknown of what's going to happen here, but, or how long it may take. It may take an extra day, so we're looking at equipment costs. I would go ahead and set the threshold at thirty thousand if that's agreeable with council.
Sure. It looks like that's a little bit under a twenty percent contingency, which I think is well within what we normally do.
Okay.
I'm happy to make a motion unless there are further questions or discussion.
Are there any other questions of council?
And one other thing I might just add, we've got a really small window to get this work done. I've been in communications with Tom Waters, the upper Arkansas. He doesn't have his hand on the actual valve, but he knows the people that do, so we can coordinate with, with them upstream and have the water level reduced as much as possible when the, when, when the work actually starts.
I'll second Amy's motion.
I didn't hear, was that your motion?
I think she's made it.
I move that we award emergency repairs not to exceed thirty thousand as a professional service contract to Avalanche or do you want me, yes, to Avalanche.
I will second that.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call and roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hemmerich.
Aye.
And I, before we adjourn, Emily's husband is having an operation and we wish him well and God bless his recovery and hopefully that will be quick and finished, so. And so general government meeting Wednesday night after the U R A meeting and therefore we are adjourned. Thank you.